We shall bring to order the meeting of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on August 22nd, and we'll start out with order and roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Ellen Carrick here. Vicki Good here. Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Jerry Penner.
Here.
Peter Scanlon.
Here.
Charles Schrader.
Here.
John DeVoe.
Here.
And for the record, Mr. Chairman, we have Jeff Watson and Lee Brown absent tonight.
If you would join us in a pledge of allegiance, please. Say it. You're in and say it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, elimination under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the approved minutes of August the 8th. Any corrections, additions, changes, complaints? If none, a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Public hearing. Sub number 18-007, Sterman Parkway filing number one. A request by Sharon Rochack, applicant in Jeremy and Sarah Pearson's property owners for a minor subdivision of 12.15 acres in the east one half of the northwest one quarter of Section 23 Township 12 South, Range 69, W6PM, Primer Room, Radiant I think that means, 1115 Sterman Parkway in the Plan Unit Development, PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. This is a minor subdivision, final plat, and for the hearing this evening, the red star shows approximately where the Stermans home was. They have sold their home now to the Pearson's, and the purpose of this plat is to clean up the parcels that were part of the overall 300-plus acres on this site. The Sterman PUD came into the city in 1996, and so now the Stermans have retired and have conveyed their interests in the property. So you're familiar with the Sterman tract because a couple of years ago, we had 80 acres of this 300-plus acre tract carved out of the original parcel. So here's an aerial that shows Lot Number One and what we're calling Tract A. It is also known as the Pigtail. So the purpose is for a minor subdivision, final plat, of a 12-acre tract that is unplatted currently, and wanting to plat it into Lot One, which is outlined in red, as well as Tract A, which is outlined in yellow. And the Pigtail Tract A was the original driveway from 1975 that accessed the original house on this acreage. So it was part of the original homestead. And on this aerial, I'd also like to point out, this parcel contains a tennis court, and it was also conveyed to the Pearson, or will be conveyed to the Pearson's once this is finalized. A zoom in on the subject property, Parcel A, with the Pigtail that goes up toward Bradford Court, and then Parcel B is also described for the tennis court on the plat. And these Parcel A will become, and Parcel B will become Lot One, and then the Pigtail will be carved off as Tract A. So here is an exhibit of how the property is currently deeded, and in order to get a building permit, we need a legal subdivision. So if the Pearson's were to add or modify their property and need a building permit, this subdivision, legal subdivision of land, is necessary. So it really cleans up the site. So you can see as deeded, the original 12-plus acres included this old, original driveway, which now will become Parcel A, or Tract A, and then Parcel B is shown here as the tennis courts. So this is the final plat. Again, Lot One, which is about a 10-acre, little bit over 10 acres. Tract A is about 2 and 1/2 acres. I want to point out that access right now is served with the current road or driveway that connects from Meadowwood Park and goes south. The northern half is actually a public road easement. Then, right here where the gate is to the Sterman property, it converts into a private drive that would connect through all the way to Trout Creek Road. Eventually, we are hopeful that this will become a city street. So we definitely need the connection on this west side of Woodland Park, because right now, all the traffic on the west side of Highway 67 is forced to go east to Highway 67. There is no southern connection over to Highway 24 from this area. So it only makes good sense and good planning to create a public road through this area. However, that is not part of this final plat. The amended 2016 master plan, this is what you saw a couple of years ago, when the 80 acres was carved off the western side of the Stermans' property, and what is being proposed tonight is consistent with the PUD as it is today. With respect to compliance with the final plat sections, in the design standards, which include the purpose, the site considerations, street frontage, easements, and lot arrangement and dimensions, have all been met. However, I'm sure you saw in the staff report that we are asking for additional easements, and I'll just go back to the plat. What we're requesting is a 10-foot easement along the front of this property, and then 10 feet along the sides, and 20 feet in the rear. Not that these easements are necessary today, but in the future, when this surrounding property should develop, it's important that we have perimeter easements for utilities and drainage already established on this new lot. So the design standards have been met as conditioned for the easements. With respect to the dedication of the road right-of-way, there is no dedication of a road at this time. They do have legal access through the 60-foot access and utility easement where the road exists today, and so it is not necessarily dedicated at this point in time, but in the future is when we hope to be able to open it up as a public road. The park capital fees are not applicable since this home existed prior to park capital fees being implemented. So they're not applicable. As far as frontage, it does front on the private access easement. Improvements, they will be monumented. The streets will be adequate from Meadowwood Park to this site. The driveway or the private road that was built has adequate drainage. Fencing, water and sewer serves this property. The sewer line goes right in front of this house, down through Meadowwood Park. The water line actually cuts over to Evergreen Heights Drive and will eventually be looped through this property down to Meadowwood. And then, of course, it's served by power, electricity, and other services. Its relationship to the comprehensive plan, it's residential with their private open space. So staff finds substantial compliance with all standards, recommends approval with just two minor conditions. The plat we're asking to be amended to include Sterman Parkway labeled on the easement and in two places, on the north end and the south end, and then add those public utility and drainage easements to Lot One, as I described. Sharon Rochack is here this evening to represent both the Stermans and the Pearson's, and so if I can ask Mrs. Rochack to come to the podium, and then we'll take questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
You have to identify yourself, Sharon, even though we know you got to do it for the record.
My name is Sharon Rochack. I live at 400 Apache Trail in Woodland Park.
Thank you.
And I primarily work for the Stermans, and I have just sold this property to the Pearson's, and we're just wanting to kind of clean it up. As Sally said originally, when the Stermans bought this personal property, it had a road access easement that ended up at Bradford Court, sort of the proverbial road to nowhere. As they began to buy the surrounding properties, then they built a road to the north that exits onto Evergreen Heights. So we're just trying to kind of clean all that up. How about questions?
There used to be a gate and a combination there to get in that.
I think so, probably, in the '70s.
There was.
Right.
Any questions?
Is there any thoughts about future development that you can share with us?
You know, as Sally put in the, in the report, AWMI does have a contract, an option agreement, with Sterman Properties, and that really doesn't even take place until November. So I am not representing, or I'm not part of AWMI. I just work for the Stermans. So I don't really know, and they don't even own the property yet, so.
Other questions? I have a question that probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but we'll try it. What's the, sorry. First class. What's the purpose for Tract A? It looks like a road to nowhere.
That's, that was the purpose. It just became obsolete because as they, they built the private drive with the gate to Sterman Properties and the large industrial plant, that became virtually obsolescent. But that was the way that they got it. So all we're doing is just making it disappear. And we're incorporating the tennis court, which they had on their use, and it was all on their property, so it didn't really matter.
Who owns the property on either side of the road?
Of which road?
Tract A.
Tract A is Sterman Properties. So it'll dissolve into Sterman Properties.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Just to the east of Lot One is a platted lot, Armstrong subdivision, and that was platted in order to build a new house on this property. So there-
And that was done back in about 2099, 1999, or something like that.
Yes.
Sally, a question. You had talked about a future loop down the Meadowwood, on the water.
Yes.
What's the purpose of that?
Purpose is, in order to develop anything north of here, it will need to have the water extended between Meadowwood and this property, Lot One, so that water line will provide adequate service and fire protection to any future new development.
And who will do that?
The developer.
Okay. And that's the other, the land around it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Certainly.
Anybody have any other questions? No questions. At this point, do we have anybody signed up on public comment?
Mr. Chairman, we have one.
I'll ruin that last name. I'll let you say it when you get up.
My name is Malia Wirick.
Come up in the mic. I'll need to, so that's recorded.
My name is Malia Wirick, 1510 Bradford Court, and we weren't sure exactly what the plans were, and we were concerned that there was going to be additional traffic into the neighborhood, but that doesn't sound like that's going to, okay.
I don't know what'll happen 20 years from now, but right now, Sally.
Right. Well, I was just concerned about the street condition on Evergreen. And if it's bad now, if we allowed more traffic in there, I was just concerned about that.
Sally can respond to that.
Yes, and we can let you know that Evergreen Heights Drive is going to be milled and overlaid here in the near future. May not get done this year, but our engineers are currently designing that, and we'll be bidding that out as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else that didn't sign up? Okay. Same thing, name, rack, and serial number.
I'm Timothy Williams, and I live at 1505 Crestview Way. Just to make sure I understand this correctly, with this photo up here, Tract A, which is dirt driveway now, is going, I mean, they're not going to use that at all, and it's not going to become part of the property, or?
No. So it will, as Sharon mentioned, be absorbed into the overall property once AMI purchases this property.
Clear things up for me. Great. I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else that want to get up? Okay. If not, we'll close the public comment. I don't think we got any rebuttal, so at this point, it's in your hands to ask any questions. If not, then we'll encourage motion.
Go ahead. Okay. I'll move to approve the Sterman Parkway filing number one, minor plat, minor final plat, subject to the two conditions that were articulated earlier in the meeting.
Second? Charlie seconded.
Question? So, roll call, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with Vicki Good.
Yes.
Ken Hartsfield?
Yes.
Jerry Penner?
Yes.
Peter Scanlon?
Yes.
Charles Schrader?
Yes.
And John DeVoe?
Yes.
And Ellen Carrick?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. That concludes this part of the session. You're free to go, except we got to stay here and earn the big bucks.
Thank you.
At this point, do we have any reports from anybody?
I would like to report a few things, if I may. Just a few. First of all, on your desk was the CML magazine. It's got some great, interesting articles on families and youth, and there's even a description about what Cripple Creek Park and Rack has been able to accomplish over in the south side of the county with their new adventure park. And I also learned recently that the adventure park has an archery range at that park. So if you're into archery, it's not well-known, but you can reserve a time to go shoot your bow and arrow. I wanted to let you know about a few upcoming meetings. I just recently sent out to you an invitation for board training. The Downtown Development Authority had first requested the city for board procedures, and staff felt this is a good opportunity to open it up to our other quasi-judicial-type boards. So City Council, Board of Adjustment, the Planning Commission, even the Historic Preservation Committee sometimes deals with QJ land use kinds of things. We will be having the attorney from our insurance company, Sursa, here. His name is Sam Light. He does a great job. That is next Tuesday morning, 7:30 a.m. in this room. So hopefully, some of you can make that. And then, something fun is, on September 10th, we have a volunteer appreciation picnic at Memorial Park. So that will be at 5:30 in the evening, and I hope that all of you can bring your spouses and come and enjoy a barbecue for appreciation of the hard work that you do and the time that you dedicate to the city in order for us to have this wonderful, fabulous community. Then I wanted to let you know that we just received an application for a flood hazard development permit, and I think we may be scheduling that for September 26th. Yes? Looking at Laura, because she's going to be the lead on this. And it is going to be located across from Gateway Elementary School. There are four lots that an investor is looking to develop, two duplexes, or a duplex, two units on each lot, so a total of eight units on the four lots. It's where the old metal barn is right now on Baldwin Street. That will be demolished, and these new duplexes will be constructed, and they'll also be building Grace Avenue, which has a right-of-way there, and so it will cut through between Baldwin and Boundary. So we'll have a new connection at that time.
That's a big, open lot across from us. A big stretch there in that old building, it's not being used. The staff will track along.
And it's, I'll talk about Pike's Peak. And it's in the floodplain, believe it or not. The floodplain starts right there at the metal building. So they'll be presenting to you on the 26th for the flood hazard development permit. And speaking of new roads, this, tomorrow afternoon, if you'd like to join us, Pike's Peak Avenue, which now connects to Highway 24, has just been completed, and the coffee kiosk that Dan Taylor and his wife have constructed will not be open quite yet. They're in training, they're finishing up, but we wanted to celebrate the new road, Pike's Peak Avenue, that was part of a Downtown Development Authority, TIF reimbursement, so a tax increment financing. This is a perfect example of how TIF works to enhance infrastructure, public benefit, for public benefit, by reimbursing a portion of their property tax over a certain number of years. So we're pretty excited about having this new road open, and it was one of the projects identified back maybe in 2016, a few years ago, when we did the traffic circulation plan and trying to increase the number of routes that people can choose from, so to diverse the traffics, disperse the traffic. And Pike's Peak Avenue, that had been a platted right-of-way, but since the 1890s as part of Foster's addition, and now it's constructed and will be functional.
That road was all the way over to Willow Station, and that's the one on the backside there where the trailer park is. That's another artery to be able to get out of Highway 24. That's what that is.
And it's at 3:00 p.m. that we'll be doing the ribbon cutting. The road is open now, so if you want to go traverse it and try it out, it's open.
You got something to say? Bring me up, kind of right on the corner somewhere?
Um, yeah, we're going to be at Willow and Pike's Peak, right on, just about one block off of the highway.
No, same up.
Oh, um, yes. The Colorado Municipal League does quarterly meetings throughout the state, and Woodland Park is going to host the next quarterly meeting. You have a postcard. They're going to, if you'd like to go, please call Suzanne LeClaire tomorrow, or Chrissy Stapelford, Bird, can't talk tonight, and reserve your spot. They're going to start at the Aquatic Center with a business meeting. You can attend that, and then they're going to move to the Cultural Center and have dinner. And Ben Schmidt, the city engineer, is going to be doing a presentation on drainage. So you, it will be very interesting to listen to Ben's presentation about our detention ponds and standards associated with our drainage criteria manual. So I encourage you, it's September 4th, in the evening, if you'd like to go, your spouse can join you as well. It's a good, good time to network. We get other elected officials and appointed officials and staff from around the region who come to these CML quarterly meetings.
Back when I was on council, I went to CML probably three times. And that's where you go, but then it was out of Dale. But that is just the greatest group in the world to figure out what's going on in the state. It's worthwhile going to this. Just make sure, I mean, I know it's-
Deadline is-
-paying up to that.
The city, the city will cover the $18.
Get your spouse or a significant other and come on to them. It'll be worthwhile.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that it?
Yeah, no meeting on September 12th.
Anything else? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute body break, and we'll meet down there at 250. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjournments. Perfect.